Good evening, everyone. Tonight is a planning board work session. The date is Tuesday, November 9, 2021. The first item on our agenda is roll call. Susan Axelrod.
Here.
Joe Murphy.
Here.
Paul Jordan.
Here.
Josh Daley.
Here.
Peter DiStefano.
Here.
Robin Pauthier.
Here.
And Maria Mack is here. Our next agenda item is zoning text and map amendment, South County Hospital. Jamie, would you like to bring us up to date?
Okay. As we mentioned at the last regularly scheduled meeting, that the legal counsel associated with South County Hospital had a conflict for your next session this evening and the preceding week. We did a poll of the board members, and it appears that December 2nd that everyone would be available. There's only one member that I did not hear from, but you had six of seven members that responded in a favorable manner. So it's our suggestion and consultation with our legal counsel that the planning board schedule a special meeting for December 2nd, which is Thursday night, with the sole agenda item of South County Hospital.
Very good, probably a wise decision. So if any of you folks are here tonight for South County Hospital, as you may have heard, there'll be a special meeting on December 2nd. Our next agenda item is architecture, design, general development, and landscaping.
Okay. If I knew it was such a small group and our agenda wasn't South County Hospital entirely, we should probably have pizza and something to drink. Again, tonight I have a presentation for you. I want to say it's casual in form and manner. Feel free to stop me as I go through some of the slides. Tonight is primarily focused on mixed use, meaning first-floor retail office, second, third-floor residential. So I have examples primarily from the East Coast of the United States, a few from the West Coast with regards to what you may feel is appropriate with regards to form, structure, scalability, kind of the likes and dislikes. All of this is the precursor to moving forward with design criteria and developing a design guideline for the community as it relates to non-residential development with the exclusion of single-family. Single-family, there is no attempt or recommendation from our department to develop design standards for a single-family home. I know the planning board has discussed possibly design standards for duplexes, triplexes, townhouses, stacked flats, but not the single-family home. So with that, I'll start the presentation. Primarily scale, what is appropriate and where, style and form. This is a single three-story building. This is an actual rendering of an infill development. My assumption is that the commission and board, other than potentially the bulk of the building, would look favorably or appropriately on the form and architecture. And if someone sees something they don't like, feel free to boo. Don't hold back, Susan, or just say, wait a minute, Jamie, we need to talk about that photo.
Do we need to make sure the microphone's on when we boo?
Okay.
Jamie, that first image that you showed, was that meant to be first-floor commercial, second- and third-floor residential, or?
First-floor, non-residential office or retail, second-floor residential, third-floor residential. Again, and you'll see some of the slides where I start to talk about infill and scalability. If you look just to the right and left of the building that's been superimposed in this photo, you'll see a traditional two-story building both to the right and left of this infill. So again, there was, in most instances, a one- or two-story commercial building at this intersection, and this is what's being proposed. I think if we come back to it, you'll see a theme, Joe, if, you know, keep them in mind, and we can scroll back through things. And again, with the discussion about infill, this is a site in Watertown, Massachusetts, a little bit northwest of Tufts University. Typical 1940, 1950 development. There's single-story to two-story, single-family units. Some of the areas have a couple duplexes and triplexes as you move closer to the main road running diagonal through the property, through the photo. This is a photograph from 2012 of Tripola Road, which goes basically almost all the way into Boston, out through Concord and Lexington and Concord. I'm sorry, we'll go back. That's looking southeast into Boston. This is looking a little more north, so we were just looking to the right. Now we're panning left. And this was a standard development from 1940 through 1970 at this intersection in a kind of urban suburban setting for the Boston metro. That is a photograph from 2011 or '12 showing the south westerly street corner. And this was an area that was ripe for infill. So between 2012 and 2019, that corner Gambrell-style commercial building was purchased, and that is infill development in an Irving setting in Boston using their Form Based Code. So when we talk about scale and appropriateness, at some point in time, sorry, this corner and this other corner may equate to the scale as it transitions from that 1940, 1950 development to 2020, 2022, 23, 24, 25. You're looking for more density in these types of quarters. So I just wanted to be aware of that. As you entertain a different style of development, there is a transitional period where the building you're potentially contemplating in that first-floor retail, second-floor residential, third-floor residential, may not be 100% compatible to the left and right. It will be a potential time before the left and right becomes compatible with the new style of development that you're looking at. And again, it's an open discussion. Through these discussions, you may say three stories is too much in certain areas, maybe we need to stick to two, so the transition is a little easier and softer.
Are you going to go back over these so you can get our comments?
Yeah, we can. I'd like to run through it. I kind of have a theme to what I'm presenting to you, and then absolutely we can go back. Again, the discussion about form, style, and appropriateness, typical Main Street. This could be existing development or infill development, looking at scale. These are three-story buildings, mixed with one-story and two-story. They're rear-loaded with parking. This would be very traditional and common in Wakefield on Main Street. Looking at the form of these buildings with regards to spacing, where you have that probably turn-of-the-century three-story building that has a top, middle, and bottom, and then you potentially had a tear-down on the left-hand side of this photo, and you've lost that scalability. And this is very common, and you see it in downtowns throughout the country, and you see it in Wakefield, and you see it in Peaceville. Now, you have the corner gas stations, which are laundromats now. Those weren't laundromats, and those weren't gas stations. Those were different styles of buildings. So again, if you went to infill, do you want that single-story building on the left, or are you looking towards the form of the buildings in the middle and to the right? More traditional take, modern interpretation of that historic vernacular, first-floor retail, second-floor residential. Again, first-floor retail office, second-floor residential. This is how that potentially plays out in the real world. Again, first-floor retail office, second-floor residential, roughly two and a half stories there. And you can see they did fairly well. You know, there's almost the appearance of a 10, 10, 12-pitched roof. But if you look at the very top, just above that first gable dormer at the corner of the building, you'll see a flat wall section. That's just a parapet. The HVAC is hidden behind the end gable and that flat wall. This is from the design guidelines of how another community interpreted. Modern take, you know, it's a square building. It just has different fenestration. You know, back to that rendering and that architectural interpretation, back to a real-life interpretation of that. Again, I would assume this may be appropriate within your community to the right or to smaller photographs, which I think is some of the historic vernacular of a tear-down infill in South Kingston that you would, with hindsight, would determine to be inappropriate. Something that may be a little more familiar to you, if people are familiar with Newport, post office is in essence behind, if you were standing here taking this photograph, it's behind you to the left. You're looking at Bannister's Waff, the red parrot, and in the background is Salaces. Sad that Salaces is no longer there. But again, that interpretation of a tear-down and rebuild is a new restaurant without outdoor dining. First-floor restaurant, second floor is part of the restaurant, but easily that second floor could be residential as well as the third floor. My assumption is, is if that was proposed in South Kingston, that you would potentially, depending on scale and where it was placed, the form and style, I think you would find Again, that architectural rendering of a building that would be similar to that. This is a project in California where they were looking at infill. This could literally be anywhere USA. This is a more modern interpretation of that infill. What's interesting is there used to be a rail line here, and that little highlighted box was actually the ticket booth for that rail line. In the redevelopment of this property, that ticket booth was moved and put in one of the town parks and used as a shade station. This is the rendering for that site with that first-floor retail office, second-floor residential, and here's what it looks like in the real world. So you go from that vacant, kind of nondescript lot to the proposed rendering by the architect to the built project. Again, that's a modern interpretation. There aren't too many buildings that look like that in South Kingston, but you do have a variation of styles of architecture in your villages. Excuse me? If you would like to.
I don't know what part of town that that would be suitable for, like along Main Street or in Peaceville or in Kingston. I can't imagine any part of town that something that modern would not stick out like a sore thumb. So I boo.
To your point, the scale, the mass, I mean, it's two stories, it's not a large building. I agree, it's very California, but I think something that size, you know, retail below, residential above, would be a good fit.
And again, I didn't have time for this round, but you do have some buildings in town, in Wakefield, that take on a similar appearance to that. And part of this discussion is exchange between the board and staff so that we understand even a building that may exist in the downtown, if you had a second opportunity to do it, you'd like to see a slightly different variation of it.
And from what you can see of the building to the right, that does not look California at all.
No, and that's why I'm saying, it literally could be, you know, Wakefield, Peaceville, Greenwich, East Greenwich, East Providence, Lincoln, Cumberland. They're, you know, it's that two-story, first-floor retail, second-floor apartment, hip roof. It really could be anywhere. Well, I don't know how that one got in there, but. Again, you know, as planners, you know, no one intended for that to happen, that just happened. And as planners, for years, we've been trying, as a profession, to try and undo some of the things that occurred historically. That Standard Oil sign, that was probably worth quite a bit right now if someone had that. Again, back to form and scale. This is a four-story building. It's infill development. It's first-floor retail. The second, third, fourth floor could easily be office space or residential. With the magic of photoshopping, we could easily make that a three-story building and bring it down in scale. And if I had a little more time, I could make it a two-story building. But again, you know, in some areas it may be appropriate, and others, you know, the four-story building, there probably aren't many places in town unless it was set off the road as part of an interior development where that would potentially be in scale. Where the three-story building may fit in a few more locales. Again, another interpretation of, we'll say, classic kind of New England architecture. It's just a modern interpretation of that. This one's from Portland, Oregon. So, you know, easily first-floor retail or office space and second floor, third-floor residential, or it could all be office space or all be residential. You know, it's taking some, you know, it's got an interior and an exterior staircase, takes some gable and pitched roofs from both the Washington area and New England area. A little more traditional seaside coastal replica. This is from Pine Hills in Plymouth, Mass. This was built brand-new. It was a former Data General site, 3,000-plus acres that was developed in its entirety. Another building within that small Main Street area. And then some of the little details that I appreciate, and you'll see that I have a lot of photographs of these. Instead of the standard restroom sign, someone architecturally or interior designer did a very simplistic restroom sign. That, you know, things like that add character to communities and buildings. And they're not much more expensive than what would traditionally be done. That's just stepping away. As part of this development, when they built the new community, they also built the post office. So the post office is connected to that first-floor retail office space. This building is actually second-floor office space. There is no residential component in their downtown. And again, just to the right-hand side, just a little bit of detail on the list of office occupants to the right. Simple entrances, you know, where are you in your condo unit? I'm at the east entrance. You know, it doesn't need to be neon, it doesn't need to be internally illuminated. The architectural detail of the covered entry protects the doors from the weather so they'll last longer, and also protects the pedestrian who's trying to open the door to be out of the weather when the doors are opening and closing. Again, simple details within the community. This is an outdoor dining area using a repurposed granite block. And again, they don't have boxwood blight at Pine Hills yet. But again, the use of different materials. You have a traditional New England red brick paver. You have a rowa, you know, traditionally, most developers, it would immediately be mulch. Instead, there's a small grass strip, and there's a perennial or annual hedge, and then there's that evergreen hedge, and then it's supported by planters internal to the outdoor dining space. So it gives you a sense of place, and also if you sit and have lunch there, you also have a sense that you're not on the sidewalk, you're not near a busy street, you're well protected, and you're actually part of a very formal outdoor space. Again, some of the small details when you're doing a private community, you know, Peter will tell me that the gingerbread on the columns adds maybe $200, $2400 per column. But subtle touches that aren't structural, but they add detail and character. And again, I think the signage at Pine Hills is extremely well-done. This is Martin Flowers within their downtown. This is probably one of my, I want to say, top 10 buildings, not necessarily for its form and also their landscape that incorporated an immediately identifier to what they do there. Unfortunately, this building and this business has not survived, so it is no longer Martin Flowers. Again, simple things with regards to signage. They do not need to be internally illuminated, they do not need to be neon. You know, I would love, I've tried, but I do not know the sign company that the developers, Green Development Company, used for their signage here, but, you know, the headliner hair company with the scissors, you know, it's all PVC product made to look like wood, but it's extremely well-done. Another development in Massachusetts, Mashpee Commons. I know when you did South County Commons, I think Alex Petucci went to Mashpee, and his designers also went to Mashpee. These were taken from 2009, so you'll see some 2008, 2009 photos, some photos from 2016, and some from 2021. Mashpee Commons, I think, went under construction in about 206, 207. It is still not built out, almost 16 years later. The residential component did not take off. Again, scale and form. I'm not a, there are components in Mashpee Common that I'm a fan of, and there are other components as a planner who's very interested in design I can find criticisms of or faults with, some of their street whiffs, some of their parking areas, and there are canyons associated with the small retail space where you have to walk an extended length where there's no interaction with your surroundings. Again, scale. This could be a photograph of Wakefield. A simple scale and form. HVAC, those are parapets, so the HVAC is all behind there on a flat roof, well, flat roof but pitched for snow and rain. This color.
That, I'm sorry, could you just back up?
Yeah.
And that is a new building.
That is a new building.
Yeah, it's very traditional.
Oh, 15 years old.
Yeah.
Again, Main Street appearance. And, you know, this, simple things when you add color. No one had to add that small potted plant at the corner, but that adds interest in color and dimension. And you can do street trees in a small area. I believe those are Armstrong red maples. Armstrong red maples. Another example from the East Coast, Georgetown, Washington, DC. This is historic, this is not a new build. But again, you'll see variations in roof lines, very similar buildings, but there's variations in that horizontal skyline. This is a modern interpretation of a zoning code that is probably inappropriate. Someone read the zoning code and said you need to have changes in elevation of your roofline, and you'll see the parapet does go up, down, up, down, up, down. It said you should articulate some type of street canopy, and they did. You should have changes in color, check. You should have changes in street elevations vertically, check. This is where you have to clearly articulate what is appropriate and what's inappropriate. And ultimately, when we go through and if we move forward with developing design guidelines, putting a photograph like this in there that says this is inappropriate will save staff or whoever sits in my position or whoever sits in your seat a lot of time arguing with the developer that I checked, Mr. Rabbit, Mrs. Mack. I have six different changes in my roofline. I have, you know, eight different changes in my vertical elevations on my street front. I've done the awnings you've asked for. I have windows on the first floor. I have landscaping against the foundation. You know, I even did granite lentils. And my assumption is, is everyone agrees that that would be an inappropriate interpretation of a code. It met a code requirement, I can guarantee you. Again, this is just, and this is something that I hope with some of the American Rescue Funds, as you, you know, people like Wakefield's really nice, Peaceville's really nice, what can we do that's different than what's there? And the simple introduction of color in plants and flowers and those historic lamp posts, the change in the crosswalks adds a different look and appeal. Again, this is an example of, in the Midwest, a little bit of tactical urbanism where they blocked out a street, and it comes to life with simple artificial turf, picnic tables, and very basic lighting. A little more familiar, this is Newberry, Massachusetts. A lot of these buildings have been repurposed, some are brand-new. First, you know, and here you see similarities, but you also see variations. So the inappropriate interpretation, that's a modern interpretation of this, but this works. That other photo I don't think works. And could easily become a watercolor that someone would purchase. Again, another photograph of Newberry Port, a little more current. This is COVID. This is from 2000, and where they took their parking and converted it to outdoor dining. And again, you add that color variation, change in materials, and you change that horizontal roof line and variations horizontally and vertically, and you start to build the downtown. And again, could easily be a photograph. Again, looking at some of the details from the period lighting to the signage and the variations of color, sidewalk materials, and then here, and the photograph on the left is actually, that's a And then here, this, and the photograph on the left is actually, that's a pedestrian alley and it's brick. But they do, it is, it does function as a service way also. So it is open to vehicular traffic at certain hours from a service perspective. This is Dedham, Denham Square in Massachusetts. Again, just, and you'll see I work between black and white and color. Fairly nondescript, black and white. You'll see my attempt there. If you look at that, that roof line to the right and you'll see the changes. And you almost have a European flair in those two dormers, almost Scandinavian. Behind it, you have a church spree. Further back, you have a municipal building with, you know, three, four floors. And you see that, that change in roof line and that articulation. Sorry. Should have changed the color, but then. Bringing you a little more closer to home. This is a project in Newport, Rhode Island. Bannister's Wharf is just to the left. If people know where the bronze cast wave is with the feet sticking out of it. Again, post office would be just over your shoulder to the right. This is a project done by Union Studios, Hammett's Wharf. And that is the infill to what was a parking lot. Now again, I'm going to show you two different variations of this. This is how it speaks to the street. And it is first floor retail. Second floor and third floor are hotel space. That's a photograph of it at dusk and illuminated. And this is the working site of the building. So you have parking underneath. And a little less detail on the back of the building that faces the waterfront. But a good use of public space. If anyone hasn't been here and walked around this, I would recommend that you do. Moving a little more south, we're in Haversham, South Carolina. This is a completely new development. I want to say it's in the 500 to 600 acre realm where they built a brand new downtown and associated multifamily and single family housing. So again, this is, this is a square box building with variations of roof lines, dormers and gables. Another variation of, again, this is a square box building with different fenestration. And again, the level of detail throughout this community is pretty detailed and concise and has a central theme. Again, signage does not need to be neon or internally illuminated. This is first floor retail, second and third floor residential. Again, simple signage, similar theme and style. Within their downtown, there's actually one way in one direction, a second way and in another direction, separated by a common public space. And just some other. Here, I would say it would have been nice if they put a little more thought into the use of the first floor space. And you'll see the bistro tables. They look nice until the car pulls up right next to you and tries to open their door. So there isn't actually enough space for the, a car to park there and a door to open without hitting the tables or the people sitting at the chairs. But again, you know, when it was planned, it may not have been planned as a restaurant space. Hindsight's always 2020. They did plan for seating on the side of the building though. Again, I think this Main Street is a little more appealing than the streets in Mashpee. Because again, there's a little more street activity in it. You're at three stories versus two to two and a half. Again, a similar building. And again, that detail. This is two and a half stories, first floor office space or retail. Second, this corner building is actually second floor office, but the middle and the rear building are residential. And just my tribute to Veterans Day coming up. And again, the simple things in these communities that are designed and planned and the neighbors getting together or just the simple aspect that the developer who built this brand new, very long building. This building is almost 300 feet long. The colors of each building and the, and the shutters change. Some have dormers, some have pitch roofs, some have flat roofs. But just the simple fact that he put a flag holder on each column on every porch to allow that American flag to be there. You know, someone was thinking. And that's what I have for you tonight.
Thanks, Jamie. Shall we go back to the...
Yeah, I can. And then everyone can pick it apart.
Jamie, one of the things I noticed, and I think you see it in Wickford, but the small signs and businesses seem to be in places that are designed around pedestrians and, and slow moving traffic. You know, you see, if you think Route 2 in Work, the signs are huge because everybody's doing 50 miles an hour. When you get down to the walkable scale, you don't need big signs. You don't need neon. Someone needs to tell the pharmacy that. That's for another day.
I want to say I was surprised, maybe shocked when I was reading the code, both prior to, to come in the South Kingstown and then being brought on as your staff, that you, as a community who prides itself on style and form of development, that you still allow internally illuminated signs. It's part of your zoning code. It is allowed as of right, as well as the signage type is just a simple square footage calculation. And again, there's a lot of case law out there with regards to your ability, which is proven in the Supreme Court. You cannot regulate content, but you absolutely can regulate size, quantity, and illumination to a sign, as well as location.
Before we jump into talking through each of the pictures, I just want to say a general comment, which was, back in September, I went up to Burlington, Vermont, and which is a lovely city. And I think, you know, people from SK who would go there would look and say, there's a lot of things to admire about what they've done in terms of development. But I stopped in particular, we were walking along a street that was probably as heavily trafficked as 108. And yet, next to me was a building where folks were sitting outside, outside a cafe. And there was, you know, restaurant, retail. And it didn't feel awkward for them to be there. And they didn't feel awkward, even though it was a fairly heavily traveled road. And I think there were several things that you've brought up and that we've talked about in general that made that the case, right? The complete street sort of thing. There was, there were bike lanes. One of the things that I liked about it was actually that the bike lanes were painted green. So you could really tell that they were meant for bikes and not just sort of an accidental addition or... The other thing that they did was set things back where there was a tree line from, and then the sidewalk, and then the, the outdoor seating, right? And then the other thing was that the fronts, and in many of these pictures as well, moving things closer to the street and putting parking behind. They did that in that building as well. It all served to signal what type of place that was, who that was for. And I think, you know, we hear all the time, people in town say, oh, we don't want development because we don't want to look like, you know, Route 2 in Warwick. The funny thing is, if I look at Old Tower Hill Road, that looks a lot more like Route 2 in Warwick than say, if you go down Main Street in Wakefield. And a lot of that has to do with exactly the things that I was just talking about. What does the streetscape look like, complete streets? What is the thought in terms of the way the building sort of sits? And, and what it looks like relative to the, the street front? So that's just a general comment about, you know, an experience that I had that I think is...
Yeah, I think that for every one of these images, if you, I had the same thoughts as far as it relates to context. Obviously, some of the delineation on many of them where you've got your sidewalk, potentially a fence, and then your streetscape. But all of the ones that I think most people will like, again, I think the context is really important. I don't think any of the ones that showed overhead utilities were not the nicest ones. The ones that you showed that I think everyone will like all had underground utilities. Even this one, even though I don't think the building is as nice as some of the others shown, you have, the, the view is from the right hand side. It looks like you're looking at it from a park. So there's potentially a green space. You do have tree canopy at the top of the frame, as well as some behind that building. And you have some street trees. You do show a bicycle. You show the crosswalks. Of course, some of your later slides show different materials, which does make it more attractive and also probably a little bit safer. So I think context has a lot to do with it, as well as the architecture itself.
And to Maria's point, we're showing you some of what represent the better examples, the things you're going to strive to achieve, the scenarios where everything aligned from a permitting perspective, from a financial, you know, because a lot of things, there's a regulatory gap between what you're striving to do and the financial reality of what a developer can afford to deliver, given the economics of your community. You know, there are things in, you know, if we were in Greenwich, Connecticut or New Kane in Connecticut, where you can charge, you know, $60 a square foot for your retail space, that developer has different options. When you're in certain areas in the Boston where you don't rent by the, by the bedroom, you rent by the bed in the bedroom. And that's $1,200 to $1,700 per bed. So there are different economic factors. And I think what we'll not necessarily struggle to do, but where we have to find the balance between what is feasible financially and what you can strive to get from a developer that is very representative of South Kingstown.
And where is this image?
This one's, I believe, outside of the Washington DC area.
Victorian England chimneys.
Do you, Maria, do you want me to just slowly go through them? And if someone has a comment, we can stop again. So again, this was the Watertown, Massachusetts example of, again, traditional downtown. And, you know, that change.
Can I stop you here? So you, the one before this and the one before that. So that to me feels like a community, like a neighborhood. The one, two in front of this, the big boxy building, says city to me. It, it's up on the street. There's no landscaping. There's, sure, there's some variation in the building. But if you were walking down that street, it's, that's a city. That's not, that is such a diff, to me, that's a very different perspective than the one, a couple before this, that showed a small, walkable community with first floor retail. And even if you put like apartments on the second floor of those first floor retail, this to me, just for a pedestrian on the street, this screams downtown Boston, not a cute Watertown community.
So a lot of the things is interpretation of a code, what you're trying to achieve with the code. This checks the box, first floor retailer, office space. But you have to walk almost 500 feet or more before you actually are engaged in a different business. To Susan's point, even, even if the first floor looked more like this, where every 40 feet to 60 feet, you have a new business venture. Versus this, where you have that corner entrance. And as you head up the street, I'm trying to think of the name of it. I think it's Commonwealth. There's no, it's a canyon. You're walking and it might as well be a solid wall. Because there's no exchange between your environment and the building's environment. Nothing makes you want to, all you're going to do is walk as fast as you can from point A to point B because you need to get to 485. And there's nothing in between. So again, to me, this is similar to the other inappropriate building that I showed you that. It checked all the boxes.
Happy to hear that.
No, but...
This has no appeal to me at all, in this community at all.
And I think the, the scale, really what I wanted to show, you know, my prime example, and I drove by this building for two years and watched it from, from this to a hole in the ground, to the, the parking underneath it going in, to its final form. Just wondering how, how they were going to address the storefronts. And I think they missed an opportunity. But again, businesses also change too. And someone needs to find that financial space of how they're going to sell 40 feet at a time facing the street with little to no parking in this Watertown area.
While we're looking at this, the building at the far left with the little balcony upstairs, I mean, that to me sort of speaks Wakefield, Main Street. I think some of the largest stuff, when we start looking at Old Tower Hill Road, which can only get better, right? Not something that big.
I think even this, and one of the difficulties here is they were maximizing space. The form-based code allowed them to go straight up as a box. But if you look at buildings of this scale, if you set back the second floor and made the first floor a little more relatable to the pedestrian scale, it would feel less like Boston or less like Newberry Street or Boyleston and more like Watertown.
If you didn't tell me where this was, and I don't know where this is.
This is in Watertown, Massachusetts.
This looks like there's whole sections of Brookline near Fenway Park that have been built that look like that, where you're just walking down long deserted streets. Always windy and cold. And yeah, that looks like the Fenway, Brookline neighborhood, that a lot of it's turned into that.
Oops, sorry, Joe. I was getting ready.
So, so the, the scale or the height of that building versus your very first slide are very similar. Both about 45.
Oh, um.
The difference being that this is probably about 45 feet too.
Yes.
The difference being that the fourth floor on this is in a steep roof, right? It's probably solid. And also, the first floor has some setbacks. But you only have three floors of vertical wall. And then you have the roof. That other, so this, I find this one would be totally acceptable, right? I think that this is a very nice rendering. It's a nice building. It's something that could fit into a, makes, makes very efficient use of space because it is three or four floors. And it's something that could fit into a community like South Kingstown in the corporate area. That other one, which is, I don't know, about six or seven slides there, is about the same height. That's also about 45 feet. But in this case, you've got four floors vertical, no recess on the first floor. And this is something that has a total different feel. Something that wouldn't fit into, in my opinion, South Kingstown. So it's not just, it's not just the height, you know? Sometimes I think, well, you put in the zoning, no higher than 35 feet and no higher than 45 feet. But there's obviously a lot more that comes into play. 45 feet, but there's obviously a lot more that comes into it.
And that's why I'm a strong advocate that a form-based code or any articu-
Yeah.
Again, a few samples of design guidelines I've been involved in, as important as it is to articulate what you want, is also to show a few photographs of what is appropriate and what is inappropriate, and those are those interpretations. And I will probably guarantee you, there will be a developer who gets you somewhere right in the middle. So you're striving for As, and you may get some B pluses or A minuses, but you're gonna try and eliminate the Cs and the D pluses.
Can you go back to that other one? That one. The things that I like about it, I like the fact that it looks like the dormers may have created a fourth floor, the windows, very attractive. It's hard to see what you've got for, if the parking, it looks like it's set in, or if that's just a corner where the curb is.
So with the theme of articulating a component of complete streets, there is a bump out there. So you'll see that car is, where that crosswalk is, there is a bump out, and that car is set eight feet in behind that bump out.
And then when you go back to the other one, the sort of west coast-looking, it looks like either the parking is a little too generous, or maybe that's a shared bike lane.
There's a bike lane there.
Okay. And there's not as much delineation as there are in some of the other photos of sidewalk, planted space, and then curb.
Yeah, and I mentioned, you know, hindsight's always 20/20 in looking at developments after they've been built, and I have a few friends who are architects, and I have a few other friends who are architects, and they work around the country, and sometimes they don't have the opportunity to go back and actually see what they designed without just photographs. So, you know, we talked about several things in Habersham, and some of the things at Mashpee, but here, you'll see there are, you can't see them well, but underneath those awnings are actually bistro tables. So someone thought about incorporating that, not as an afterthought, but in the design plan, so that you have the appropriate width of the sidewalk in that area, and then that gives you a little bit of a separation between the parked car or the sidewalk and the person eating outside.
The other thing about that is, you know, with the thought of thinking about the small business perspective of this, and the financial, like, how do you make this work from that perspective? That thought of all sorts of dining is moving outdoors, right, and the need for more permanent outdoor space. The other thing that strikes me is that when you start to think about these design elements, what style and elements are appropriate, scale is much more acceptable if it has those right elements. And then use is less important too, to a certain extent, you know, the flexibility of use becomes, where again, I think, I've said this before, I think sometimes our main streets are, have been overly reliant on retail and restaurant business that has been so difficult to sustain, and we need to think about ways that we can have other types of business flourish in our community as well.
All right, thank you.
I just want to point out one more thing about that last photograph that I appreciate. On the far right side, there's a covered doorway there that, to protect that doorway, but then they've maximized the space above it, so instead of just an empty flat wall, they've actually created outdoor living space. I don't know if that's apartments or office space, but having those little balconies over that, like, making use of that empty space above that doorway adds a whole lot of feature to that side of the building, as well as serving a practical purpose. Like, that was just, I think that's very clever, the way they've done that there.
That is residential space.
Yeah, to the right of that building, there's an, a fence, and it looks like a little arch that connects that building to the stone buildings or brick buildings to the right, which is kind of interesting, because that could create a courtyard for a restaurant or some other kind of little green space.
I'll try and get more detail on this one, I've had this slide for a while. Yeah, I almost will guarantee you that before that building was built, that's what that street corner looked like. You know, maybe it was a two-story version of that, but it was similar in nature.
That, oh, that one, could you just go back right there? See, no, you were just on it, where, there. See where it says driveway? I think about, if you have enough depth to a building, such as on a Main Street, then that driveway can become a pedestrian alleyway, and then you can have businesses that front along that. You know what I mean?
Yes, yeah. And again, that's similar to the building in Watertown, it's on a corner. If developers start to think of this as a corner and not just a driveway.
Right.
You look at things like Rockefeller Center, and that pedestrian accessway, there are, you know, as long as you, what developers are always concerned about is the gross leasable area associated with that frontage as it relates to boots on the ground or cars driving by, and who's gonna be willing to take what will be considered a Class B or C retail space versus the Class A that fronts on the street.
That's what creates the charm in a lot of areas where you thought these.
Well, in some aspects, to me, that's where the seamstress can be, that's where the destination business can be. The hair salon doesn't need to be right in the window on Main Street. Most people know who cuts their hair, and who, where you're going, and they don't need to pay that Class A retail space, they can pay the Class B, Class C. They don't need that visibility, because if my hairdresser moves to another salon, I'm just going to where she goes, and she's gonna tell me where that is, and I'm gonna find it. I don't think many people walk down Wakefield, Main Street in Wakefield and decide to get a haircut. They're, they're driving, you know, and that's just one example of a business that doesn't necessarily need that prominent location. And again, I think everybody understands how this relates to the street, and this is Wakefield, this is Peace Dale. Now, and you're literally looking at the Sheldon Block, and then you're looking at Harbor One, and then you're looking back at the Chevy dealership, and you have Harbor One's that single-story building, which the owners of that building would like to do something with the American Rescue Funds and art.
Which building?
Where Harbor, I believe it's Harbor One, yes. I want to say almost across the street from Pure Pizza, in that vicinity.
One of the things that I appreciate about Main Street is, like this, even though I know that you don't like this, is all of those walking alleys between the buildings, where if you're walking down Main Street, there's a break where there's an arch, you can cut back through to the river, there's another alleyway, there's an alleyway next to Brickley's, there are those little breaks in the, in the wall. And that's one of the things that I think makes Main Street especially charming, is that there are breaks between the buildings, or little tunnels between buildings, so that it's not just a big, long, flat wall. And some of the examples we saw today of retail that was in a row with, you know, different roof lines and whatever, were still one big, long, flat wall with a little bit of decoration. These breaks between the buildings, I think, make it a more walkable and a more friendly community. Especially if you can put the parking out back, like they have on Main Street, the parking's around the back, but you can cut through, you don't have to oof it all the way around the building to get to the front.
Right, so, Susan, you made a comment that I don't like, that there's, I'm not formulating an opinion on what I like and don't like about downtown. All of this is a discussion that leads someday in the future to a code in order to understand what you find appropriate and inappropriate. This example is not necessarily about form and scale, it's about the spacing of storefronts as it relates to the street. The alleys are perfectly appropriate. I think the alleys and pass-throughs in Wakefield and Peace Dale serve a very appropriate purpose for the rear-loaded parking lots to get to Main Street, because there is limited parking on Main Street.
So Jimmy, the poor spacing here is between the doorways, the sort of.
Yeah, you really, remember, we talked about those storefronts in the 40 to 60-foot range, some are only 20 to 24, and if you had three of those buildings in a row, you start to lose your form of downtown. It now becomes a strip-type development downtown versus a walkable downtown. I now have to walk, you know, 1,000 feet to get to another business, versus in that typically 1,000 feet, I may have 15 businesses, and now I only have three, so. And these buildings have actually been built. This one has, I believe. This one has, it's a bank and office space. Any thoughts on this? I know you don't have many stone structures in downtown, but again, just look at form and scale and massing.
I think there's a lot of interest to the roof lines, there's a lot of interest to the setbacks, and I certainly love stone, I know it's a, you know, not a material that's used as much, but that makes, I mean, Peace Dale is as charming as it is because of all of the stone buildings that the hazards built, you know?
Right, which I find is.
I like this, I could see, I could see that type of building in Peace Dale very easily.
Yeah. It's interesting, you have this, you have that stone vernacular in Peace Dale, and then you immediately turn the corner, and you don't necessarily see it in Wakefield.
You also have an extended corner, which allows for the facing awning, and it looks like a space there, you have a wall, and it looks like there might be a gathering space, and you have those steps, and again, that creates a little different type of context and feel.
I don't want to be too disappointing, it's a parking lot.
Oh, well.
Hidden parking lot.
It could be, and if you go back to the, you had two sort of pen and ink, that one and the one before that, the reason those, the pen and ink drawings, they seem to show a greater level of detail than in some of the photographs. And of course, you have the leafy space that surrounds them, but you really can see the detail. I mean, obviously, the cupola and the archway on the right, those are all details that make everything.
Yep, I'll get current photographs of, and I'm pretty sure this, of the two buildings, this one was built, I'll get a current photograph of it. They're fairly similar, and the architectural detail does come through on the actual building. Any thoughts on this building?
I think, you know, two and a half, two and a half stories, it's a fairly, you know, traditional-looking building, I think.
I thought I had it in color, sorry.
I'm not sure about the entirety of it, but I think the idea works, something, something a little smaller.
Well, that, I don't know if that's a retaining wall, or if it's just a delineation, where you have obviously seedings and umbrellas, and that adds to the space as well.
That's outdoor dining space.
Yes, yep. And the brick sidewalk, the planted edge, the trees, the period lighting over on the right side, and it looks like there's a deck on the back, which is another gathering space. And there might be, and there are people seated in the foreground, which also looks like a gathering space of sorts. Since there are humans there, that one can't be a parking lot, right?
Correct.
This is a building that I could really have feelings one way or the other, depending on what the surrounding buildings are, the surrounding area, so it kind of looks almost like maritime to me, that if it's in this, like, harbor area, it would fit right in, but I could also see it in other areas where I'd say, you know, that's totally inappropriate. So this is one where I would say I could really like it, or not like it so much, depending on the surrounding area and the surrounding buildings.
Do you know where this is?
I.
You didn't like Newbury Port, or?
No, this is not, this is not Massachusetts. I want to say it's in the Maryland area, which, again, to Joe's point, could be near Annapolis.
You know, I think also to Joe's point, this is almost too much for Wakefield, it's a little too high-end looking. I mean, not that, not that.
Oh, great, thanks, Bob.
No, 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 I mean, I mean, we have this, we have this old town with a lot of charm, because it's old, and to sort of, if you drop that in somewhere, it, well, you've said this before, it could be a period of years before the surrounding area starts to look the same way, but it just seems too much.
I'm gonna put it back to black and white.
It does, it does look a little, it does look a little Newport, it looks like there's a slate roof, I mean, there are a lot of.
And again, it's interesting for me to listen to the conversations, and I think everybody's, the points you're making are extremely well-taken, and I'm absorbing all of that, that, you know, to Mr. Jordan's point, that, and even Joe's, I like it, but I would need to know where it's going. You know, if this went on the corner where Bank of America is, on Tower Hill, you may say it, maybe it's okay, but if it, if it went on the corner where one of the laundromats slash gas stations are in town, you may have a little angst about that style of building in that location. But if I skinned it more like the Rhode Island Bank, it would have a different feel. And that's why sometimes I try and just work in the black and white, so, you know, you don't see the brick, and you don't see the clapboards, or the color variations that may be a little more coastal versus non-coastal.
I can say with 100% certainty that everything looks better in color. Like, that's a whole lot more charming in color than it was in black and white, whatever the facade is.
I'm trying to get you to focus on form and scale.
We're shallow enough that we also like color and.
I did throw some color in for you this time. And again, people I'm sure are familiar with this building.
And that one, I think, that absolutely, that white building on top, I mean, it may be a little big for Wakefield, but I think the idea, especially with the cupola up top, I think it would work really well.
I mean, for me, you had a, it was a redo, but you had a pharmacy built recently, but as an infill, could that type of building have another story on it that has four apartments above it? And still have a similar scale?
It's a little hard, oh, can you go back for a second? It's a little hard to see. The main building, is that attached to that lower?
Yes.
Commercial section? It almost looks like it merged kind of two styles, like, sort of the farmhouse and then a Main Street.
Yeah, so Salaces, that was there prior, which on the first floor had the pool hall and bar, and there was a one-story section of that, so you can see that just by that contractor's vehicle, and there's a pickup truck coming out the side road, that's the one-story version, and they really held on to that form for their one-story restaurant area. And again, great utilization of the rooftop area for outdoor dining. So I would say that's a relatively good example, that would be appropriate in town. And again, modern interpretation that may not be appropriate.
Inverted garage.
And this, and this scenario.
What it looks like.
Again, that, you know, the architectural rendering is, I think, a little harder or harsh than the actual building, but it.
You look at this one, and you think of it as, you know, with. You look at this one, and you think of it as, you know, with clapboards, instead of, I don't know if that's white stucco, or, you know, with a, just a different skin on it, and some nicer windows, and you've got a completely different building.
Yeah, instead of doing the big overhang, if you had a, an element at the top, whether it's cornice, or a different articulation of that roof line, you could make it feel a little more appropriate to Wakefield.
I think the size and scale are absolutely appropriate for, I think, any part of Main Street.
Yeah. Again, I like the form as it relates to scale as an infill. I'm not sold on the final architecture.
Yeah, and the proportions, the second-story windows versus the, I'm assuming those are windows with the two doorways in between them.
Yes.
Just proportionally, it seems off.
Yeah, it could, and again, from a development standpoint, and this one's in California, so they're not dealing with snow, but the maintenance associated with that first two to three feet, right at the curb level, I don't think you would really want to replicate that in New England. And I know you don't want that.
That's why scenicamerica.org exists.
Again, this is a, is a large building, scale, scope, you know, it is bringing that pitched roof, but I thought this was a building I could easily, you know, transpose for you down to that three. You know, I think this gives you a lot of angst and prejudice, bringing it down the scale, and again, skinning it with clapboards or a different treatment. This is a, actually, a sand-colored brick. So again, it plays very neutral and very plain. This is similar to some of the architecture you've seen from Union Studios, and recently on a project proposed for Main Street. And again, this, in color, this actually has the dark gray and black exterior, similar to Union Studios' project in Newport.
I love those designs. I just.
Jackson Hole, Seattle, Redland.
Even Burlington had buildings that were more modern in that way, for sure.
Yeah. And again, as the new group of college students and young adults enter the workplace, this is, in some aspects, what architects and builders are saying they're looking for. Because with this style of construction, with clear span, you know, you're building it kind of in a unit structure where you can do that 22-foot clear span for the entire floor space for your unit being rented, gives you that open studio look. And again, with a slightly different skin and fenestration, I think you can get this building to look more like the first building in the first slide.
There's a residential structure on Sagatucket Road, almost on the end, on the right-hand side, and it's weird, because the mailbox says Joe's Garge on it, which I think is somebody's idea of a joke, Joe's Garge, I don't know. But it's a very sort of modern-looking barn. I think the whole thing is new. I don't think it's a recon, do you know the building, I mean? It's a.
Curtis Corner.
No, 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 this is Sagatucket Road, just before you get to Ministerial, maybe.
Curtis Corner.
I'm sorry, Curtis Corner, yeah, maybe a quarter mile before you get to Ministerial. No, 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 heading out, way out, almost to Ministerial. Anyway, it's very similar to this. Similar windows, it's red, I mean, it's a nice, nice building.
But again, form and scale, board members are relatively comfortable with this?
You know, are there ten of them next to this of the same type? You know, again, taking it, and you do want some variation in a space like a Main Street.
Well, you would have one facing you, Maria, one would turn, and then the other one would turn. Now, and again, I get your point, and that's some of the discussions we had, is looking at buildings like this in a one-site, one-off scenario is different than if a developer comes in and says, well, you like this building, I'm gonna copy it six times and build six of them on my site. And again, from a regulatory standpoint, you need something that says you can't hit "copy, repeat." It can be, copy the form, copy the footprint, copy the roof lines, variation in the patterns and materials, so that they slightly read different. And, you know, some of the samples I showed you of those downtowns, even in Newburyport, those buildings are almost identical, but there are slight variations and subtleties that work, so.
So, sorry. I was just gonna ask if there's any quest, any way of protecting people who land in the shade of these big structures?
Communities, primarily, you know, starting in Portland and California, and some of the communities like New Canaan, Connecticut, looked very hard in their zoning code about building the box, and requiring that as you go higher, you have to step back off the property line. New Canaan, typical one-acre house lot is between 1 million and 1.2 million. A tear-down in downtown is in the $600,000 to $900,000 range, so you're buying a 10,000-square-foot lot. And in the mid-'90s, people were buying small 1,200-square-foot, 900-square-foot footprint capes, tearing them down and literally going three stories up in your building envelope, set back 35 feet tall. Modern interpretation to maximize square footage. New Canaan reacted to that, and really looked at the, kind of, that sunlight provision.
You need some air and some light.
And stepping that back, yeah.
So can I just, I'm sorry, can I just comment on this building? I know that I'm old-fashioned, but I am partial to the balconies, the awnings, the details, the curly cues that make a building charminger than this, which is Spartan to the point of being severe. Like, there's absolutely zero embellishment on this building. There's no outdoor living space, there's no landscaping, and there's, there's no, there's zero detail on this building. And I realize that if this is the new wave of modern architecture, and we're gonna try this for 20 years or 30 years, and then move on to something else, but there's, I don't find this very appealing at all. And if a black and gray, flat-walled structure were built on our Main Street, I wouldn't love that, because it would stick out like a sore thumb on our Main Street.
The colors don't do it for you, Susan?
The colors, the colors usually make it better, and it didn't make it worse.
But.
But there's, there's, it has no character to it. I know it's supposed to be modern, and I'm old, but it, there's, to me, there's no character to this building.
And again, this is where the architects who come to the, right now, you have no design guidelines. So as you develop those design guidelines, someone, an architect, is interpreting those, so some architect.
Ugly claws, we have to be able to pull out ugly claws, there has to be some.
But you know it when you see it, right? But again, I think Joe, Joe touched upon it earlier, and Paul did also, you know, I picked certain slides to almost engage you in this type of discussion, because that first building, you noticed the utilization of those outdoor porches that extended over a doorway.
This has a fire escape.
This has a.
It's a little bit pretty and spray-painted it black, but that's a fire escape.
And an architect who went to the University of Chicago, or RISD locally, would say that's a very modern interpretation of industrial view of historic New England vernacular.
Industrial. That's, that's the word here. We are not an industrial town. We are not an industrial, maybe in like, on Valley Road up in Providence, where everything is kind of mills-turned-industrial, this might fit. But where we are, industrial style, I don't.
Yeah, no, and again, this is, I absolutely encourage and enjoy this exchange.
I think when you look at something like this, it looks very modern. You change the windows to six over six, you get rid of the black trim, you change the siding to shingles, it looks like half of Wakefield already.
Yeah.
I mean, looking at this, it's just the perception of the windows and the offset grids and the black lines. You showed a bunch of pictures before about their boxes with deep rink roofs. They had a similar thing, if you change those black stairs to, like, BDC. I don't have a picture.
I was thinking, similar thoughts, the right side, if you took away that center kind of bump out, and made decent windows, it could be your typical salt box. And then you would connect it, as in so many historic buildings, you have a, an L, and then you connect it without the ugly giant windows in the center, and then you connect it to the other portion. Again, with different windows, without the fire escape on that side, it could look very traditional, and it obviously is, was based on something that was traditional to start with.
And hoping that resources are available, that when we entertain working with a consultant to develop that, we can take a few of these buildings and say, you know, the board has a little bit of angst and anxiety about this type of building, can you New Englandize it? And show some options, so that really in a design guideline, this could be your not-so-appropriate on a sliding scale to appropriate. So you're taking what you may view as a C+, and you want to move that sliding scale to that A-, A+. And there's a number of ways to get there. But the, you know, to Peter's point, the form is very similar to things that you say you like. It's just the material choices, the window choices, that you're saying don't represent South Kingstown. And I, again, it's a great conversation to have.
What I, I think, either sink or swim in this building is, like Pete said, and you said, is the materials, right? So the materials have to match the style. If you put stucco on this, or you wrap the whole.
I'm gonna go to another building real quick.
It's not gonna work because of the way the shape is and the windows. But if you look at that, and that's similar to a lot of houses in the, like I said, Jackson Hole, where they use a combination of metal, stone, and wood.
Yep.
All three together.
Ooh, isn't it similar to that one, Joe?
Very nice.
Yeah.
That building's similar to this one, but to Peter's point, a different use of material, a little more detail. Here they have, I think, you know, sixes, they're not even, you know, they're, but again, bringing a little bit of that New England versus a more really nondescript modern farmhouse interpretation.
The plate, the symmetry, and the placement of the windows.
Yeah.
And this particular one in Newport is a boutique hotel, right? Like, so, yeah, that, yeah.
I think we have to be careful, though, about limiting ourselves too much. I mean, I, I kind of like that modern design, yeah, not on Main Street, but I could see that on Route 108, you know, where we have those new apartments that are going in. If they had come in with something like that, I wouldn't have objected. I mean, I think a little bit of variety is not a bad thing, as long as it doesn't detract from the surroundings. Where you've got a very historic area, to plop this in the middle of it would be a mistake. But something like Route 108, that's sort of just a open canvas right now for redevelopment, I think this, something like this would work just fine. I mean, it needs a little more detail, but it looks, and Peter can tell me if I'm wrong, it looks like it'd be not terribly expensive to build.
It looks pretty simple.
Yeah, and again, I have a good friend and mentor, Kevin Tavridi, who owns New England Design, and we talk often and at length in his designs, and I've reviewed a few of them, about that modern interpretation of a historic vernacular. And this is, you know, an architect's interpretation of potentially that historic New England traditional pitched roof. You know, I applaud some of the aspects that he's at, you know, nine to 10, 12 pitched roofs, he didn't go 410, you know, 412. It doesn't look like they have a ton of living space in those eaves, so they could easily flatten that out, but it would change the look substantially. But again, with material and window changes, and to Maria's point, that modern interpretation of a unique dormer on the front of the building could change, right? And maybe do an actual dormer on the front of that building, or three dormers associated with those windows, and bump that out a little bit. There's opportunities, but I think the form, everybody's, the scale, maybe not even the form, but the scale seems appropriate.
And as someone mentioned, I think it was Paul, 108, the addition to the apartments that were added, that were along the street, that, that addition looked more appropriate than what is existing. That was an improvement.
Right.
I think you can't always, if something's old, and there's old buildings on one side of the street, doesn't mean you can't have modern. I think, this doesn't get said a lot, but I think URI did a pretty good job when you go through the upper collar, where there's one area inside, there's all these buildings that are pretty modern, and then right across the street, there are these old buildings that have been there forever. It does, and as you drive, like, the landscape matches, the walls match, I think there's a way to do it. I think it's important to have a little.
Again, it's that modern interpretation of a historic vernacular, and where your comfort level is that. Interesting, and looking at this photo, that no one's really talked about the plated glass in the middle of the building.
Yeah.
You know, where you could have those true kind of historic bookends with that modern interpretation in the middle, which is some common space that brings a lot of light into a building, that if you did, you know, a 12 over 12, you don't get that same light and that same appearance of the interior space. We're looking at the exterior, but someone lives there too, and how does it function from the inside?
I think, one of the things, I think I'm thinking about the same spot at URI that you are when you're talking about that. You know, some of the modern things that they've done have this mixed media thing where, you know, there's stone and wood and other forms, and then there's, occasionally, there'll be something that's like a, you know, a very modern sort of straight line, you know, over that sort of a thing. And it does have an element that works in both ways, right? It's, it works at URI, and it works, I think, in some ways because URI is a university campus as well, that, that sort of balancing between the old and the new. But yeah, I'm, I do look at this and say, it's not exactly what I think for South Kingstown, but I think with certain tweaks, or in the right place, it could, it could definitely fit.
The one that no one liked, that could be a dorm at some university, not an attractive one, but that screams dorm, doesn't it? Yeah. And look at, you've got the fence, you've got the strip, you've got the brick sidewalk.
Yeah, a lot of those things or those touches about, you know, how does it feel as a pedestrian? Like, so much of this place-based development, you know, is, how do you create a place that draws people, and that people feel comfortable with? And so much of that is these little touches, these little thoughts about, you know, how things are set back. What does it feel like in terms of the, you talked about it, Jamie, in terms of the flow of the building and the outdoor space? You know, so a lot of times, you can think of these, you know, two, three, potentially even four-story buildings, with those touches in the right ways, could create a great place. I think a lot of the times, when we look at places in South, South Kingstown that don't have that, it's like the Strods, right? It's like, it's like the streets where, like, you don't know what this is for, like, who, am I welcome here? Should I be walking along this street? Like, a lot of people, you have that feel, right?
The whole new urbanism, twangy, you know.
Right, and Josh makes a very valid point. Some of the examples are traditional, the water towns, the Georgetown's, the Maryland's, but then you have those modern interpretations where you're taking raw land, and you get to build the downtown, not one building at a time over 100 years, but almost instantly, whether you're, whether this is Pine Hills, Haversham, Mashpee, Celebrations, Seaside, you know, you, they're trying to replicate what it took hundreds of years to do in places like Wickford. You know, when they designed Celebrations, they came to New England. They looked at how the historic downtowns developed here, and replicated that with their, their Southern Florida vernacular, actually, Central Florida vernacular, but. Southern Florida vernacular, actually Central Florida vernacular, but, you know, we're still modifying potentially a zoning code in building, design guidelines that have to have the approach that's still one building at a time, you know?
Isn't this what they're doing with Highline in Newport? Aren't they, you know, the Newport Grand?
Yes.
Think that they're raising it and turning that whole area into a retail workspace, apartment, condo?
Okay.
Kind of build a whole community, basically a self-contained community where that was. I don't know what the plans look like, but I think that's their plan for that. They're taking Highline down and starting from scratch with that whole building and building it from town.
Okay.
But at one time, you wouldn't, or today, you wouldn't be able to do that at all because it was a giant wetland.
Right. And again, going through Pine Hills, I didn't see anything that, anyone had any anxiety or.
Go back one for a second. It's interesting, is the, is that a connection between the facing building and the building in the back?
Yes.
And you have kind of a little walkway, you know, again, all those details, you have details on the vertical elements, a lot of nice things.
Again, this is a great outdoor space.
It is.
And Maria, to your point, this is, so this is the building that you're looking at, and as you go around the corner, the restaurant space is there, and you can see the awnings from that building that you were just facing. Again, the photos were taken at different times, so this is the fall, and this is when I was back there in the summer. So just to the left here is that outdoor space that comes alive when it's utilized as an outdoor dining space. And again, detail and signage and architectural details.
The other, the other advantage of having some of these mixed-use sort of spaces is almost the, you know, you're talking about these, some of these elements, you can do some of them in terms of the money that the town puts towards streetscape sort of things, but some of it also is just about who lives there and who cares about it, right? And so it's almost like the Jane Jacobs Eyes on the Street thing. It's like, if you have people who actually, if you start to put residential above, now it's a neighborhood. Now I start to, you know, care about it in a way that most of us don't spend time caring about Old Tower Hill Road, because no one lives there, right? And like, so I don't care about walking around it, because that's not what it's meant for, and it's pretty clear to everybody that that's not what it's meant for. And that's a missed opportunity for our town.
There's another building in Redland, Seattle, that I have photographs for that's very similar to Martin Flowers. Again, back to Mashpee. And again, Mashpee is, is driven to the aspect of the automobile. There was a, there is a small residential component to this, but again, it was meant for you to park your car and stroll around their faux downtown. And again, back to a more, you know, Mashpee all at once, a downtown over 100 years, so. What we, what? You could almost have that as a storage facility.
That, too.
Maybe some awnings on the storage facility.
There is one that I'm aware of in an urban setting that does look like that.
Well, again, like, that's, think about it from a pedestrian perspective, that's so uninviting. If I had to walk, you said you'd rush by it as fast as you could, and you'd feel super uncomfortable. That's right.
Yeah, and it, there's a lot of discussion, if people are familiar with the new development in South Boston, in the peer space done by WS Development, SR Wiener, and a couple other large development groups, about that canyon space or the interaction. You can walk in most places in Boston, and you're always interacting with your environment, whether it's a storefront or a window, retail window that you're looking into. And a lot of urban planners are looking at the successes of South Boston at a very different scale than South Kingstown, and then also some of the failures of South Boston as it relates to pedestrian movements and the interaction of a human with their surrounding space.
Jamie, this.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, did you guys have any comments before you leave, since you sat through everything?
Yeah, I'm gonna tell us what you think.
Yeah, you just use the mic and.
I just didn't realize so much thought was going into Martin. I think it's great hearing all your comments. I wish there was a room like this, or we need Tower Hill Road, but whenever a room like this comes together.
Definitely heading over to the right directions. And, but also, I want to point out one thing, and people started really used to it, has almost forgot there are another ways, you know, like a concept, you know, like usually they only focus on the business facing to the main street, you know, both, both sides, and then you focus on the parking, but you don't have, there's always something missing. You know, in Europe, lots of the courtyard, you know, and it's a fantastic business. You can do a very, very nice business, but a very, very peaceful and safe, and people walk in, you know, the courtyard, you can go to this shop, go to that shop, and you have a certain place for parking, you know, the people can eat and walk, and so very, very comfortable. So somehow the towns will always have a little bit, a little bit of dry, you know? Just have, need a little more touch, but that's kind of comfort. You know, like, right now, I've been to Bristol, by the water there, they create a little really nice areas, and not courtyard, it's shore yard. And so somehow, you know, the, by the main street or some of the mills, old mills or some old open space, it might can create a new business and new horizon.
Well, I think he liked the idea you had using the water, like, this. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a very.
And those are walkways on Main Street that would take you to the water, and a walkway along the aisle, so.
And you really feel the, you know, the human touching and the feelings, you know? It's like a town.
Yeah.
And neat.
Well, Tower Hill Road is on our list, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Again, photograph of adding some of the detail, the detail that turns buildings into a place that adds to a community.
Jamie, that Wickford, doesn't it look like that was a, not a redevelopment per se, but look at the brick blocks along the first floor, that clearly was not part of the original building, but it's okay.
Yeah, again, that is from Wickford Village.
One of the things I really like about this is the little dormer up on the top.
Oh.
You know, such a nice touch, and it, to me, it just screams, somebody lives up here. May not be, but it looks like somebody lives up.
The defined crosswalk, the period lighting. The flower, yeah, right.
Again, looking at opportunities for tactical urbanism at some, you know, and the town does it on the festival side.
That, I don't know if this is the part of the conversation where this makes the most sense, but I'm thinking about, you've said it a few different times, you know, how the financials of this work, how does the, how does this sort of work in terms of making the space in a way that draws the right mix and that it's sustainable? I think about that from the perspective of, and a number of conversations about like place-based community economic development in my work and in some board work that I do, and thinking about, how do you diversify the developers, right? How can development itself not just be like the game that you get into because your dad was a developer, and you got the money and you got the training through that? There are a few different organizations locally that are actually looking to do that sort of work. How can you democratize development? And then there are other friends of mine and organizations I know that are sort of architects who've looked and said, we care about this sort of place-based stuff, how can we get into the development game ourselves? I wonder the extent to which, you know, we have an awesome land trust, we've had people occasionally say something like a village trust. There's also examples around the country of what are called real estate investment cooperatives, where basically people can invest in starting to own their downtowns. And then you can start to think about development that isn't just from a purely sort of, I'm a developer who needs to make a buck, but I'm a person who cares about this as a place, and therefore I'm going to make certain decisions about it as a place and put my money into it, you know, and me, if I did that personally, I don't have enough money to do that, but me, if I gather, you know, in a group of 100 neighbors who care as well and can throw some money towards it, you can start to do things, or if the town starts to put money towards it. That's, I think, thinking about that from a perspective of what does the financing, what does the support, what does the, you know, small-scale place-based kind of stuff look like?
Yeah, Josh, to your point, I have a few associates that I've kind of grown up with, and one in particular who started out as a town planner, then went on to a law firm as a land use planner, working for Dwight Miriam from Robinson &amp; Co., and then on the Stop &amp; Shop, on the BL Companies, and has been in the private sector development side for almost 20 years now. And, you know, I'm going to extend the conversation with her on the economic side of a community like South Kingstown, and, you know, you don't want to regulate yourself out of any develop, well, you could, I mean, that is a strategy to control growth, is you regulate yourself so strictly that it prohibits the financial investment necessary. But where does that find balance, and what are developers? And they're pretty much in commercial real estate and have a lot of holdings throughout New England. And what do we really need to do?
Just to jump in quickly, I think Maria will know more about this than I will, but I have a feeling that one of the potential legislative actions to come, either out of the Land Use Commission, or just out of the general, you know, housing crisis in Rhode Island, I think it's likely that the General Assembly could pass legislation that limits our land usability in some way. So to the extent the strategy of, you know, regulating away development, I think, may become less viable, right?
But I think everything that Josh said was spot on, that the whole placemaking idea, the creation of neighborhoods, and real estate cooperatives, if you know any of them, send them, send them here. Because that's the kind of, yeah, it's more of a vision rather than just about making it short-term financial gain.
Share more about that, maybe I can, I guess I'll send it to Jamie is the best way, and then you can send it around.
Absolutely.
Those are definitely models of this type of development that isn't just at the whims of whoever is going to sort of come, but how do we sort of build this a little bit more ground up?
We did talk early on at one of our work sessions about trying to educate and involve the local builder who builds single family, who can maybe move to build duplexes, and then can move to build threeplexes and fourplexes. And again, it's the financial wherewithal to be able to do that, and then, you know, the person who does a one, you know, 12,000 square foot commercial building can do maybe two of them, and then three of them, and then four of them. But, you know, the rebuilds and the redos at large scale take a substantial amount of financial resources and time and risk. And again, to Amy's point, there's no intent on staff within the department to create a regulation that is intended to slow development. I think our discussions as a board has been trying to direct and/or steer so you can predict the outcome more readily, and you don't have those unintended consequences from the regulatory process.
I heard, and Josh, you know, mentioned sending out some information, and you used the term Strods a little while ago. So I think the three of us have seen this really great video, and I think I sent you a link. The YouTube user is somebody called NotJustBikes. He's a planner who started in Houston, and he's got a wonderful series of videos about planning and all the things that we do wrong in this country. They're just, they're excellent. The Strods one got me hooked, and I've watched a couple since, but.
That, I follow, if you follow the Strong Towns, I don't know if you're familiar with that, it sort of talks, rails on Strods a fair amount, so.
I think one thing you were talking, Josh brought up, like finances and money and what that looks like. If you did a quick count from, you know, the tower, the donuts, down to the news, there's a lot of buildings there, but there's not that many building, different building owners. There's a certain amount of people that own most of Main Street. I think the reality is, we should go to them, show them what's important and how to do it, because they're going to go to a developer or some, they're not going to, most of them, some of them will, but most of them won't, they're going to bring a third party in, and they take that information and they build from there. I think if we can show them what they could put on their property in a way that we think would be appealing to the community, might be a good way to kind of go after some of this.
Peter, you make a very valid point that not every, everyone is attuned to the vision of the, of a planning board that may be slightly different than the person holding the property. And I've had many conversations over the years with owners who have no debt on their property, who may only be at 50% vacancy, but that vacancy is just pure cash flow. So to entertain a tear-down or a redo where they would have to take on debt is a hard conversation. Sometimes the older generation is unwilling to do that, but the children who are in line to the commercial heirs are more attuned to risk. So again, it is having the conversation. I have had the opportunity to talk to at least three downtown business, real estate owners. They're very interested in the American Rescue Funds that may become available, and they're very interested in what you're discussing as a board, what the reactions will be and how they can participate long-term. You did have a gentleman here tonight who was a potential investor in the community and wanted to see what the conversation was like, you know? And at the recommendation of staff, came tonight and sat for a good hour and 45 minutes, and I think took away a positive feeling from the discussion tonight.
And you know, Peter's right about when the Old Tower Hill Road study was done by the URI Landscape Architecture Studio, they brought in some of the property owners, and they did this sort of a, you know, they did a visual preference survey, but it wasn't as good as this, it wasn't like this, it was kind of like A or B, it was like going to the eye doctor, you know? I don't know which one's worse. And then nothing ever came, you know, nothing ever happened beyond that, and so that next step is really important, and this kind of conversation and these kind of images are really helpful, and if we're able to get some of those property owners in the room.
Well, and as you say, you know, it may be that someone who has had a building for a long time and paid off any debt that they have on it, isn't as keen to take on debt and do new, you know, either tear-down or new development, or whatever, but a next generation who's thinking more entrepreneurially. If you start to think about the things we're talking about as well, they start to work in a different way from a financial model. Now I've got, you know, not just the retail that I've got a. Now I've got, you know, not just the retail that I've got to struggle to try and figure out who the heck I'm going to get in there, but I have a couple other floors. I can do, you know, I can get multiple tenants. It starts to create a virtuous cycle as well as you start to do those things, you know, it becomes a more attractive place for businesses and individuals to be.
And again, I say this from experience. I've had conversations with landowners who don't have thousands of square feet, they have hundreds of thousands of square feet and some of the properties are debt-free. And the, in one particular instance, the daughter who was involved in the company was all in and dad was not. And the brother was one of his biggest tenants and he was concerned about being displaced, but the daughter was still all in, even if it meant taking on four to six million dollars in debt where the property had no debt because she saw her future 20 years down the road with no debt, but this amazing development that was paid for over these 20 years. So there's a cycle to that, that family business and that generational aspect.
And I think in terms of family businesses, you really wouldn't want Main Street to end up being URI apartments for students. Those aren't people who really care and live here.
In the other piece, just as we start to talk about, you know, community involvement, I think actually getting them in sooner because if we talk to them about, we want Main Street to look like this or Old Tower Hill Road, and they start to do the math and they say, well, the math only works if that's four stories. And we may say, well, okay, if we can get it all to look like that, but we can get four floors so they can have another level of rental, it would be good to have that conversation sooner than waiting because at the Builders Association, they say, we build the plan. So what we do is we'll create the plan and then they'll figure out a loophole or figure out a way or go through it because that's what they do for a living, development. They figure out a way to build to your plan. Problem is the plan is not always clear enough or concise enough and they figure out a way to get around it. I think it's important that we get them involved much sooner and buy in. And if they have some thoughts on what the windows should look like, is that the worst thing in the world if they're going to build it the way we want it?
You know, the picture that we all sort of gagged at, you talked about, Jamie, that, you know, this was built to plan. You can tell that this was clearly built with each of those elements and yet the end result is completely wrong. So, you know, how do you make sure that you, they're going to build a plan, but like you said, they're also going to find any way to get around it that's going to be cheaper and better for them from a financial perspective. How can we sort of guide that? And to me, the ARPA funding represents an opportunity for us to be somewhat proactive as a town in guiding what we want to happen and use that as kind of a bit of a carrot.
I want to comment on what Peter said. I think he's absolutely right. Getting people in sooner rather than later. And I think about the recent conversation we had here where people were coming to the microphone and saying, how is this the first I'm hearing about this when the town's been talking about it for five or 10 years? You know, and they're just, here's the first planning board meeting where there's a public hearing, but there's been a conversation that's been happening with the players for a long, long time. And, no, I know, I know, I know, but, but I mean, I think specifically if you said we want to talk to builders about what we're talking about planning, they'd probably show up.
And in some, I absolutely agree. With regards to the department's budget, which is really your access to funds from the regulatory side, we had funds coming available to us starting July 1 of 2022, close to six figures to undertake some of this analysis and which would lead to regulations or not, depending on the feedback from the board and the community. We may be losing some of those capital funds, but I also have been made aware of an opportunity, both on the grant side and also on the town funding side, that funds may become available to us prior to July 1. So we may have an opportunity on a grant cycle or also internally on a fiscal cycle to start to undertake some of this stuff. And probably February, I would like to potentially get an RFP ready for December, maybe have it out in January and potentially have someone on board February, March. So this may happen sooner than July 1, but a lot of that depends on workload also internally. There is an opportunity, a grant round that's coming up. My intent is to apply for $125,000 to continue this conversation and take this conversation to the community. I thank you for the person who suggested that our presentation is much better than a group of grad students. So I thank you. I aspire to do better than that, even being a former grad student at URI. But again, there are people much more skilled at this than I am. Again, I'm a generalist who dabbles in this, but I would like hopefully through the RFP or RFQ process, put the right people in the room with the right skill sets so that when they have that picture, they can say, wait a minute, give me five minutes and I'll draw your building for you. And then really designed by committee and, you know, and I guarantee it won't have an elephant's trunk and a horse's hind and a camel's hump in the middle. It'll actually be what we're trying to articulate. And again, bring that potentially through the charade process to the community and also work on the financial side to make sure that what you're trying to achieve, what you're articulating through the regulations can be built, you know, to Peter's point and Josh to your point tonight.
The only thing I would say, I know Brian, he joked and he said, oh, if we sent letters to every property owner that said, hey, we're going to make rules to change how you can do what you can do on your property, the place will be full. Yeah. That's the way we tell them and they'll show up, I promise. They might burn the place down, but they're showing up.
And Amy will be doing the presentation that evening.
You know, I think you know what I was talking about, the Mattoonik thing and that the town had been having this conversation. I don't know that any of that was ever posted on a website somewhere, that people were invited to come and talk about, you know, where should EMS be? And I know we're not, we're off track, so I don't want to say a lot, but just that if you reach out to people, because people want, everybody wants to know now and everybody's got an opinion and better to get them in early than later and that we need to figure out how to do that.
Correct.
The Contemporary Theater at that time, yeah.
And Brian works as our staff, staffing EDC, and it has literally been the subject of discussion at every single meeting for at least the last year plus about what are you doing, about mixed use, when is it going to happen, when are you going to engage the community? They didn't have a call room at their last meeting, but Brian was going to discuss with them the financial situation and our potential grant opportunity in an attempt to reach out to them to get support letters from the business community as we go through that grant process.
Can I, sorry, can I just clarify? Are we hoping to write some kind of written restrictions in town that people who want to do development or redevelopment or redesign need to follow? Or are we gathering information about what we will suggest to people that this is what we like, maybe try to go in that way? Like, are we trying to come up with some, some kind of ordinances and land development regulations that developers have to follow to make us happy or are we just making suggestions? I don't, I guess I'm, this is, this is awesome, but what are we hoping to accomplish by now that you kind of know what we like and what we don't like? Now what, like what are we hoping to create to make sure that our town fits what the community wants?
It's a three or four-pronged kind of process and before you engage the community in a discussion about what you like and don't like, it's always important that the people holding that discussion build some consensus among themselves of what they like and don't like so you can have a much more educated and pertinent discussion with the public you're engaging. And I think that's what we're doing now. Part of the comprehensive plan asks you as a planning board and us as your staff to look at design guidelines for the commercial sector and to develop standards for those. So they're not necessarily telling developers what they can't do. They're guiding developers on what they can do and what the expectations are from a form, scale and architectural vernacular. So I look at it not as necessarily as a restrictive code, but guidance to an applicant of what you're looking for so there aren't delays in the permitting process, that your vision is better articulated through a regulation or guidance document or set of standards so that the applicant understands. We have developers come to us, probably two in the last month, saying, what does the board want? I understand they don't have stringent design guidelines, but I understand if I need waivers, there's a discussion that occurs. It would be simpler if you had design guidelines and I gave the guidelines to my architect and they knew where to start. I don't know where to start. I don't know whether I should do 20 single-family homes, four triplexes or one big apartment building because the regulations give me no guidance and I'm not, and I don't have the guidance from the planning board, either regulatory or consensus on how to guide them, nor do we have that from the community right now. So this entire process is trying to articulate the comprehensive plan and whether or not any regulatory changes are warranted. This is still a discussion. As your planning director, Brian's here as staff, Jay Parker's usually with us, we're not here telling you, you need to do something. We're having a conversation where you're educated enough to tell us what you feel you need, not what Jamie Rabid or Brian Wagner or Amy Goines needs, what you need as representatives of the community, what you want the community to look like when you grow up. We all know it's not that photograph with all the signs, Route 1, anywhere, 1970. But I'm not sure, you know, there's some robust discussion tonight of that modern interpretation of a historic vernacular. You know, we're probably on two sides of the fence with that right now. Can we, through this discussion, find some common ground? And within that common ground, there's still a sliding scale, you know? Let architects be architects, let the designers be a designer, but give them some flexibility within the code that they can do something wonderful for your community. Or just copy a building, you know, picks this photograph and say, it's got to look like this. That's simple, but that may stymie development and you may not get, you know, to Maria's point, I like it, but what if someone did 20 of them? Then I wouldn't like it. So there's got to be a little bit of, you know, the professional term called the wiggle room within the code with parameters, but someone gets to move within those parameters.
I mean, I was thinking like, instead of the way you put it with this sort of strong regulatory sort of negative connotation.
I wasn't trying to be.
No, I know, but people might think that, yeah.
They can't articulate anything.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm thinking we want to create a carrot-based design opportunity rather than a stick-based.
Yeah. And Susan, I knew, I knew what you meant.
I wasn't trying to articulate anything. It goes to the head to the mouth.
Susan, we've, from my perspective, I've had enough conversations with you that when you make that statement, I understand where your heart is coming from. But again, it also gives me the ability to further articulate what the consensus of the board is, that to Maria's point, you're not trying to be the stick, you're trying to be the carrot. You're trying to articulate a vision that makes the permitting process more predictable. And if it's more predictable, it's less expensive and it gives them some certainty when they come to this community and try to develop something.
So I have a question about carrots metaphorically. So, you know, we've had the conversations, Affordable Housing Collaborative, working on the fund and the sort of parameters for using that fund. To what extent do we or others, does the town sort of have with the ARPA funds coming or other funds, the ability to sort of, it sounds like one of the carrots here is the smooth and easier process, you know, and that certainly is a big carrot, but are there even potentially financial incentives tied to certain types of development that we want to see or could there be?
Again, in the initial action by town council, we'll round it off to $9 million. It's just below that. There was roughly $6 million for economic development. A component of that was facade improvements, streetscape improvements, landscaping, wayfinding, signage. So there is potentially a financial carrot that could become available in the next six to 12 months. So, yeah.
So when I think about these general forms of shares where you rule a lot of centers for, you know, the, 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 and then I start thinking about, not just it's coming before, it's like, you know, the, 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 they basically proposed, we do it generally, but it was going to stay essentially the same sort of building. I think the discussion, one was, you know, this is a great location, have you thought about going up, making your building? And at least what I recall from the applicant was, yeah, I would love to do that, but I just don't have the parking. So in that case, you know, parking may be at least the way we're thinking of parking and I'm not sure if there's a different way, but that may be limiting us and not getting these nice buildings that you just showed, right? Because now you're two, three stories, you got two, three times the footprint, we need more parking. So we've got to think about, this is what we like, this is partly what stops it. Do we have any influence and can we change what will stop it?
And again, that's a conversation that I'll, again, I mentioned I have a good cohort who I'd like to have that conversation with. From a regulatory standpoint, you know, you allow restaurants. Restaurants could be Kentucky Fried Chicken or they could be that building that you saw in Newport that you like so much. It's hard to mandate through the code perspective, one versus the other. But Joe, if I had the answer to that question, I wouldn't be sitting here. I would, I would be developing, I'd be very successful at redeveloping downtowns. And that's why I say, bringing the right talent to the table in the RFP or RFQ form is critical to your ability to be successful long-term on the regulatory side. And, you know, there's a lot of talent out there on, you know, within New England, within the East Coast and just nationally. Some of the bigger firms who work in the United States are sought after internationally because of their expertise.
I think you showed us a couple of weeks ago, might have been a McDonald's somewhere or it was, I thought it was a chain restaurant that didn't look at all like, it could just be.
Was it the Freeport, Maine?
Yes, yeah, there was something that was.
The one in Freeport, Maine that McDonald's says they will never build again?
Oh, was that what they said?
There are other examples.
There are other, but I mean, you can pull those examples of Burger King and McDonald's from not just the United States, across Europe, across the UK. They're there. They do it when they're required to do it and the economics drive them to want to be in your community. If the economics work, you know, that will use the New Canaan. Petco went into downtown New Canaan. There's a price point associated with that, but the return was there. So they, you know, they don't get to charge a hundred dollars a bag for dog food. you know, they don't get to charge $100 a bag for dog food that sells for $60, you know, two towns away. But the, the economics have to work, and, and you need to put the right people at the table to make sure. Otherwise, you'll end up developing a code that is financially unresponsive, because what you're asking, or what you're trying to achieve, is unobtainable from the development side. You know, and, and Peter can, you know, we've talked about small and tiny homes. Small and tiny homes does not mean less expensive homes. Someone can build a $600,000, 1,000-square-foot home just as easy as they can do that for $240. You know, devoid of land costs. The lot's been given to you, Peter. So, I know we're at 9:15.
That, that sounds pretty good. I think we should maybe wrap up this conversation with an eye to the future to invite folks in to continue the conversation, and obviously the idea of having some expertise in the form of consultants would be very helpful if we get closer to achieving these incentives, and the idea that I could be of help with. Does anyone have anything that they want to chat about with regard to planning board liaison activities?
Do you have any liaison activities with the concert you went to? It was good, it was good. So we have these ongoing conversations about the, the rubric that they've been developing at the Affordable Housing Collaborative. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit more about that, Brian, but that's, that was most of the conversation, and...
Yeah, we've been, since the Town Council passed the ordinance for the amendments to the Affordable Housing ordinance, we've been working on forms, application form, which is pretty much done, pretty straightforward, and a scoring rubric for trying to determine how to disperse funds to applicants. The Town Council asked to see what it was that we came up with before we started soliciting applicants, which really isn't a problem, because there's really not enough money currently in the fund to actively solicit applicants. But I think we got the, the rubric last wrapped up, and they voted to approve it and, and send it forward for comments. So we'll send it through you guys. You can take a look at it and send it through to council. I, I don't think council asked for approval authority over it, but they did simply want to see what we came up with.
That's right. And then there was a little bit of discussion about liaison activities with the South Kingston Housing Authority, and just sort of building relationships there. And the other thing that came up that I said that I would pass on especially was the thought of public engagement as well, and doing a, a public event, sort of educationally on, on housing affordability, that brought our sort of conversation. And I suggested, you know, not getting ahead of ourselves and speaking for all of you, but that there might be some ability for us to collaborate in that way for public engagement on that kind of education.
And do you, have you, have you folks talked a bit about how to be able to better pool resources and retain resources going forward, and also having conversations with our congressional delegation with regard to any federal-type programs that may come forward as a result of...
That wasn't part of the discussion at the last meeting, but it is definitely, I think, an important thing. So I think that's a great thing to bring back to, to the next meeting, as, as we're thinking about that funding coming, as you say. And, you know, it's, it's a good time to plan in that way.
Anyone else?
I don't know. It's not a liaison activity, so, I don't know, is it, is it allowed? I just wanted to talk about the Narragansett Bay Estuary Program, just announced a new grant, up to $100,000 for green infrastructure. This could be for design. There also, there's an opportunity to apply to that same grant for a watershed plan for the Saga Tucket. Having an approved watershed plan would open up 319 money for us, which we're not currently eligible for. I did have a conversation with those folks today. It's a fairly short application form, although there is space for a seven-page narrative, which seems like a lot to me. I would not want to have to review those. But I think with everything that's happening with, with SNAP, and everything else, you know, we're talking about the watershed and with EDC, it could be a good grant application. Deadline is December 20th.
Update from planning staff? Are we going right into legal? You looked at Amy.
I, I don't have any updates unless anyone has any questions.
Again, we're processing applications, as you're aware. We're also going through our capital improvement budget. We're also starting the budget process for next year. So if planning board members have any suggestions, I will try and increase the educational budget on the planning board side, to potentially allow a few of you, if you're interested, to either become members of APA, or Congress New Urbanism, or attend an APA educational event, or Congress New Urbanism. Again, it, it was nice when they were virtually, because you could take advantage, and, and the fees were relatively low. But occasionally, both APA, APA has a regional conference every year. It comes back to Providence next year if it is in person. So it's a two-day event, and we'll try and put the resources in there if anyone was interested in attending. Congress New Urbanism is in Oklahoma, or I think Omaha this year. So you really can't get there from here. So again, that will not, but they usually swing into New England, or this corridor. It's like four planes and a prop to get there. And I say that in jest, but yeah, there is no direct flight from here to there. But again, trying to give opportunities either to leadership of the planning board, or to other members to participate and expand your horizons on the educational side, to understand what's out there, and, and not just give those opportunities to staff. If I'm successful, we'll see.
You know, Jamie, it might be worthwhile to send some of the, whether it's CNU articles, or blog posts, or whatever, to board members, so that they would have that information.
Okay. And I will send an email out tonight of, of some, you know, links to Habersham, links to celebrations, articles on those, so that if, if people want to do a little deeper dive, go through Google Earth, and, you know, look at street views of these developments, I'll give you the links to those sites and the addresses.
There was a, a very good speaker at the recent Southern New England Planning Association Conference, and it was a woman who started the kind of Main Street USA program. And I did ask Jay, maybe that might be something that we could watch as a group, and have the council watch it, and any other boards that might be interested, just a thought. I think very inspiring, spoke to a lot of what we have been discussing.
We could potentially even do that as a work session. If you had a light agenda, instead of listening to me talk for a while, you could listen to someone else.
Might also be interesting, Grow Smart has hired a, a woman, a friend of mine, Gillian Finkel, as their Main Street coordinator. So she's looking into that sort of Main Street USA, and, and how to coordinate and support that statewide. So I'd be happy to engage her if she might want to join a conversation in that way.
Thank you.
Second from Joe, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.